Welcome to the special meeting of the Public Safety Council May 11th, 2020. Heidi, the Speaker. House Number 11.
Here.
House Number 4. House Number 2.
Here.
Mayor President.
Here.
And Mayor Chief Sir Mark. President. Let's get up the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your government, which stands on a nation under God, in the name of the Lord, in the name of justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Oh, I put up the agenda. Council.
Thank you.
Home Affairs?
Hi.
Because no she carries. Moving on to public comment. Members of the public may address the council concerning any item on the agenda, fire, two or three considerations of that either. Are there any public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 38, which is our budget workshop, which will be brought to us by our planning managers next slide.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much. It's nice to see everybody here from round two. So in today's workshop, what we're going to do is we're going to go over the major enterprise funds that we did not go over the last budget, and we're going to go back and revisit the general fund because we made some changes to our projections based on some suggestions, some of the suggestions we could not do, but quite a few we did. So the major funds that were reviewed today are going to be the Streets Fund, the Natural Gas, Water, Golf Course, Airport, and General Fund. Streets Fund. In 1920, you can see revenues and expenses are quite a bit out there. That's because it includes $2.2 million in STIP funds. Our Streets Department has, Public Works, has been incredible in getting outside funded to help improve the streets throughout the city. They have done an amazing job. We want to thank them for doing that. The Streets Department currently has three time, three full-time employees, and they maintain approximately 54 miles of streets and alleys. Three people. They do an awesome job. Changes to the 2021 budget, we are balanced. We have a payroll increase for the third year of an MOU contract. There's an increase of course to CalPERS, workers' compensation of around $31,000. And the Public Works Director made reductions in various expense line items to $31,000, which brings the budget being balanced. Natural Gas Fund. The 2021 proposed budget, we have left alone. We've made changes for the debt service that has been reduced, but we are not changing that budget until we come back in August when we are going to propose a rate reduction to our citizens because we have saved so much by refinancing the debt that we're actually going to probably get to drop our rates about 10%. So for the 2021 proposed budget, we're looking at a $334,000 surplus. Now granted, that surplus will go down when we reduce our rates, but we are going to make sure that the Natural Gas Fund is still sustainable on its own and still give customers a reduction. And we're doing it in the summertime, so that way when we roll in the winter, that reduction is in place for the customers to enjoy their higher, their bills for higher. So the 2021 budget changes. There's increases in professional and technical services of $80,000, repair and maintenance facility of $15,000. Public Works admin allocation increased by $99,000 because more of the Public Works Director, the engineers, they're working on the natural gas system right now, doing the rate study, working with Mr. Bergman, so that more of their time is going towards natural gas. There's also an increase in rents and leases of $47,000, and that's the, that's the rent that they owe the General Fund for using Sierra Road. And a decrease in debt service interest of $604,000. That's huge. That refinance helped a lot. The Natural Gas Fund has seven full-time employees. Three of those employees are split between the gas and water funds, and the system currently has 3,267 active meters. We count meters, not customers. Is there anything you'd like to say, Mr. Gibbs, about natural gas?
Not yet, I'll wait till you.
Okay, going to the Water Fund. The revenues and expenses that we're projecting, Mr. Gibbs, for 2021, we're showing a $238,000 deficit. So our revenues are not keeping up with our expenses, but we knew that when we did the rate study because we set that rate study to have the surplus, or the surcharge, excuse me, per meter come in and be set aside as a fixed rate. We focused on that. So it did not bring any additional revenues into the operation side. The depreciation expense in the Water Fund is $402,000 a year. The deficit is $238,000. That means $164,000 in cash is still going back into the fund because of the depreciation expense. The cash balance in the Water Fund as of yesterday was $2.1 million, and the cash balance in the Water CIP, where that infrastructure surcharge goes into, was $1,800,000. The Water Fund has seven full-time employees with three split between water and gas. The system has 3,816 active meters.
I just wanted to talk about the Public Works budgets real briefly. So we have five major budget units within Public Works. We have Natural Gas, Streets, which includes snow plowing and sweeping, Water, which includes geothermal, and E W Administration, Public Works, and then we have Air Pollution, which is an enhanced budget. So of those, of four of those, other than the air pollution, they're all healthy, obviously, as Debbie said, for the most part. Streets, we had some pretty significant cuts because of the tax, gas tax, changes we had with COVID-19, so I think the projections of that going forward are to be probably a little bit worse. We're anticipating right now, but we're going with our best foot forward based on information we have, coming from the state. Water geothermal remains stable, as Debbie alluded to. Just, just to give you some background, our Public Works admin budget is completely dependent on the other three units we have. So all of the funding that we gather for Public Works admin comes from Water, Gas, and Streets. So we're kind of, we act as, I guess, as a service to those three divisions of our, of our department. Some of the projects, just one of the things I'm going to do quickly moving forward, Natural Gas has a protection program going forward, which I talked about at council at the last meeting. We also are working on an integrity management plan for our transmission unit coming in from outside town for the gas, and working on a cross-court program, which I will be bringing to you in a future on Streets. We're going to have a slurry seal, cracks in the Foxville project this year. We're going to be overriding Paul Blenin, Richmond, and Spring Ridge in 2021, which is part of his next facility. It's about a $2.5 million project. For Water Geothermal, we're going to be finishing Katy Springs. We're hoping to do some water main replacement on Johnson and Bill Redd, also on Harris Drive, and once funding becomes available, the water main for the airport from the tank. So some of our needs that we've got, which aren't necessarily represented in this budget proposal, I wanted to kind of give you a hand, maybe bringing those back to council later this coming fiscal year, which may seem a little unconventional, but I can also be ready to take these on a case-by-case basis instead of projecting budgets that may or may not necessarily have revenue apparent for that. So for Natural Gas, we're going to go through another piece of equipment, unfortunately back, but that's about the same condition as the one we did for Water a few council meetings ago. For Streets, we're going to be looking at those radar signs for the schools that we talked about at the Transportation Commission, be funding that. For Water Geothermal, we're looking at some generators and maybe some site security upgrades. And then for Public Works, we'll do some equipment purchases, vehicle replacement, which is a line of issue for us, and then some facilities repairs. So any questions on anything? There for me?
Mr. Gibbs? And the Street signs that Mr. Gibbs was talking about for the schools, we also have a restricted funding source of capability using also to, to help with that, which is the Traffic Safety Fund. Golf Course. 1920 budget, we had a $69,000 budgeted shortfall. Year-to-date actual $82,818 shortfall. Unfortunately, with COVID-19, we had, we did not get to open when we anticipated to open, so there was lost revenues there. For the 2021 budget, I brought Mr. Sean Bydlin, who sat down with me and went over the budget, and we made some adjustments, he did, I put it in, to where we made sure the proposed budget was balanced. And unfortunately, to balance that, the changes that had to be made, we had to reduce the maintenance staff and we had to reduce the cart kids. With the minimum wage going up and the revenue sources plays down, you will see by the next slide, unfortunately, having cart kids is just not feasible, paying a teenager $13 an hour to clean a cart. So Golf Course. Annual memberships are down 45% from 2015. Rounds played are down 41% from 2015. Using audited financial numbers from 2018, 2019, the cost to operate and maintain our 18-hole golf course breaks down to $16,571 per hole. General Fund subsidized $45,633 in 2018, 2019, or it paid for two and three-quarters holes. Rounds played in 2018, 2019, $8,539. If you take that number divided by the cost, expenses for the year, it works out to $34.93 cost per round. When you use that number and you divide it into the revenue, $29.29. General Fund is subsidizing $5.64 of every round of golf play. And we are estimating at the end of this year, the Golf Course is going to require a cash transfer from the General Fund of approximately $65,000 to make a hole. Airport. Our 2021 proposed budget for Airport, revenues don't change much, $109,000 in revenues. The expenses, $281,605 includes $172,545 of what's called depreciation expense. To make it understandable, depreciation expense is a non-cash expense. When you buy an asset, you depreciate the value of that asset over a set number of years to recoup your cash back that you spent to buy that asset. When you do not have enough revenues to cover and make your budget balanced, you are not setting aside that cash, so you're not funding your depreciation. So the 2021 budget, if you take the depreciation expense out, it's balanced revenue and expense. However, the cash balance as of yesterday was $18,991 in the hole. It may require, at the end of the year, also a cash transfer from the General Fund to make the operations side whole. The cash in the CIP Fund, General Fund sets aside $15,000 each year in that CIP Fund to make sure it has a match for its next projects that will be coming up. And now we take a second look at the General Fund. When we brought forth the original budget, Administrative Services had a $200,000 deficit. And what we wanted to show you, the council, the public, we want to take out the 4% vacancy rate because putting that 4% reduction in there for possible positions that could go vacant for a while is not realistic. It is not showing the council or the public the true cost of having the employees they have doing the work that they have. So we took the 4% vacancy rate out. We increased City Council Health insurance to add one more City Council member health When we did the purchasing of the street sweeper, we got to remove $66,000 transferring cash to the Streets Funds for the MOE. Purchasing that street sweeper took care of that. We don't have to send cash anymore. We removed the project manager position. It's still on the requisition list, but it is not funded. There's an increase to LAFCO contributions for $2,855. We reduced the debt service payment for the refinance that will be coming to you in the next couple of meetings to borrow from the natural gas system to pay off per-site fund, and then each fund is going to be responsible to pay back to the natural gas cash. And of course, we removed the 4% vacancy rate with those changes, and we also made some changes to our revenues, which you will see a slide coming. Administrative Services, we have a deficit of $23,000. Next slide. Public Safety Police. Beginning budget was $361,233 deficit. By removing the 4% vacancy rate, reducing the debt service for the refinance, and reducing the transfer in from General Fund, as you will see in slides coming, that we are projecting some of our tax revenues are going to be down. Unfortunately, that brought the Public Safety Police Department's deficit budget to $517,517. I can't stress enough that all of our budgets should be balanced. We should not be using one final-year grant funding, a vacant position to hopefully offset. We should be balanced every single year. Then when you do have a grant to offset that money, that money goes into your PIB bank to help you with one-time expenses like buying a car, buying equipment, getting through tectines like this. We have been deflating our budget with a 4% vacancy rate, counting on vacant positions for the past three years to get us through. It's going to catch up with us. It already is. When I show you the last slide of cash, you will see it is already catching up with us.
Do you want to present now?
Yeah. Well, I've been here the typical path of looking for ways to cut our budget 10%, and the only way we're going to make that substantial cuts is to reduce personnel. So I've come up with a few options as far as ways we could go to try to cut 10%, $340, $50,000 off of our budget. So number one that we came up with is cut a sergeant on top of the one that we already have that's, that's empty. Reduce one officer and a CSO, and that totals about $347,360. Option B would be cut two officers for $249,600 plus a CSO for a total of $326,560. The only person with a CSO, she's about ready to have a baby, so she's going to be off work for about four months, but save some money as far as not having to pay her salary for, for four months. We do have some revenue that's expected to maybe increase, so stay the same as last year, $20,000 safe, $20,000 exposure reimbursement, that's a back-up grant, it's a huge one for us. The twins were a COVID-19 grant for $45,000, which I think we're going to get that to help out in some other areas. Besides that, we should have some substantial savings in the dispatch contract because they're underpowered, understaffed right now. So we pay based on 40% of, of that contract. We're currently in the process of renegotiating or trying to renegotiate our bill with the county as far as the animal shelter bills, we're paying a lot of money to that, which we probably, we might pay it directly for something else. Now, the potential outcome, if we cut these positions, obviously, there's a whole laundry list here, but if we have to take this out, which if we want to, then we certainly don't want to. Obviously, that's supervision. If the CSO does get cut, the captain, sergeants will take on the responsibility of evidence, processing stuff back there, that will keep all the evidence and found property. Also with that, if the CSO is cut, she also does animal control. Our responsibility, limited animal control based on our staffing levels because the pound is currently five miles out of town, which if we have two people on, we leave one guy by himself, which is not safe for, for that person. The Vegas Clinic, that's a pretty good source of revenue for the city as far as doctor tags go, and she currently oversees that, and that would probably be cut. Public Relations, outreach with the kids, the kids fair, the spike camp review, that's basically on her plates. That will have to be divvied up or limited to a minimal presence or, or not on the ball. As far as the patrol staff knows, you know, if things get tough, we're going to have staff burnout, we're going to have staff that looks to go elsewhere. Basically, we're making a turnkey employee for every part of it to just take them and just go into a car, which is a good thing. We're going to see an increase in overtime day. We're going to turn into a reactive, relatively proactive type department. Special details, traffic enforcement, that type of thing will be limited based on any additional funding we can get. The 290s, who's calling that are the sex offenders, sex residents, unless we get some funding from state, which again, those would be limited to maybe once twice a year. Parking issues, the CSO does the parking issues as far as toll vehicles that are been left on the street for three days, four days, parking tickets uptown. You know, with minor crimes, you're going to be dealing with an officer over the phone or internet once we get back to them. So the face-to-face contact with officers to our, our public is going to be drastically changed. We're going to see an increase in sick time, burnout, increase in workers' costs, which could be a huge, huge cost to the city at some point. Training's going to change. We, we have to send our actors so much training here, but we're going to have to factor about overtime, additional staffing. We do get most of that money reimbursed, but there still is a cost to the city as far as producing that to maintain well-trained officers. We're looking at officers not taking much time off. Instead of using their comp time or holiday time, the city would be paying a lot of that as a cash out, rather than getting a lot of overtime off to spend the families and kids and, and take time away from your jobs. So these are just a few of the things that we came up with as far as, not worst-case scenario, but if we have to make those bigger cuts in our department, that's how we would save the money, and those are the potential outcomes as far as how we change how we do business. Any questions?
Madam Mayor, there was a couple of things to add. Our, in the police department, our request is pretty much identical to last year's. We're not having, we had some decreases areas, but we also had some increases in areas. But if you look, last year's budget was $3.237, this one is $3.267. So there isn't a lot, there's very little in there. We did bring in some more revenues from post, from, as the captain said, from state, but they are now budgeted for the 2021. The one thing I do want to, to mention is, you know, we won't know where our ending budget is until it's reconciled. So to give you just an example, we won't show, so SRO reimbursement from a high school, that will not be counted towards our bottom dollar come June 30. And I would ask to establish correct me if I'm incorrect. However, that payment will come after June 30. So we will have, obviously, that will be counted towards the 1920 year. And I believe that just doing some rough math, I believe we are going to be very close. I don't know which way that's going to be as far as the carrier, supposed carrier into next year. The other thing that I'm confident about moving into 2021 is that I'm confident that we are not going to be paying out of $96,000 in animal shelter. We're already looking at options, that's going to come up next week at the next council meeting, so I'm not going to say that's going to go away, there's going to be some cost. However, there is going to be significant savings. And so I think with that, I would go ahead and close.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. We're going to move on to the Public Safety Fire Department. The original budget that we brought to you had a $205,000 deficit. By removing the 4% vacancy rate and reducing the debt service for the refinance, it brought his deficit to $295,000. He is going to have savings for the deployed employees, so that will help his bottom line. And crossing our fingers, if he has, if he responds to quite a few out-of-area fires, this budget does not include that because we've said we don't budget with that money. It has to, they have to respond to a fire to collect, so we don't put it in there and say, oh, we're going to get $20,000. We don't do that. Unfortunately, PD, to make their previous line, to make their budget balanced, they would have to cut 16%. Fire would have to cut 20%. And 80% of their budget is personnel. So I'm going to turn it over to the Fire Chief, and he can explain his 10% cuts and how it will affect his department.
As Debbie said, we're looking with a vacant position only for deployment to Afghanistan. Our department has a budget of $170,000. And also, she said, 80% of my personnel costs are 80% of my budget, so there's really, to keep the lights on, we have to cut personnel. So my 10% budget outlook would be an administrative assistant, full-time firefighter, full-time, for a total of $173,000. The expected outcome, due to the reduction of these two positions, our first administrative assistant, minimal public contact at the front office, phone calls, requests for assistance, et cetera. Decreased efficiency and production with the WBA and code enforcement programs, budget tracking and coding, run report submittals to OES and NFA, various annual and monthly reports to the city, state, and federal government. Staff reports and resolutions, all correspondence with the public goes through the front office and local businesses goes through the front office. And that position also provides assistance to volunteer fire department organization. The firefighter, that diminishes, diminished crew safety from a 2-0 to a 1-0 staffed engine at times because there's not enough overtime to cover that engine with two people. The national standard is four people on that engine. We'll be waiting for those people. We have out-of-area employees because they were grandfathered into the requirement for residency, so waiting on employees that live in Reno and Chico is going to do us no good now. We'll have diminished effectiveness of rapid fire attack due to waiting for additional personnel with the volunteer, volunteer organizations to safely complete tactical objectives. We'll have increased response times. We'll increase work comp claims and sick leave due to fatigue and burnout of staff trying to cover the shifts. Increase cost due to contracting work currently completed by our staff such as hydrogen testing, hose testing, SCBA inspection, maintenance and repair, PPE inspection, maintenance and repair, vehicle maintenance and repair, and equipment maintenance and repair. Diminished training for our volunteer fire crews. Decreased public education outreach. Minimal or no school programs, reduce station tours, and reduce public appearances. The decreased ability to inspect businesses annually. The decreased ability to inspect businesses annually due to other increased workloads. Increase in ISO rating due to decreased inspection frequency, training hours, staffing for fire response, pump, hose, and hydrant testing, and inability to meet the NFPA standards in 1710 and 1720, which is the standard for our deployment of personnel in a timely manner, expecting people in eight minutes. Increased loss of, increased fighter loss risk to our commercial sites in town, and loss of revenue from out-of-area fires and hydrant testing. And as Debbie said, that potential revenue on a good year, we can bring in $100,000 in revenues. This would also be a possible change in employee work schedule. I would also like to state that our call volume has essentially doubled. Our day call volumes have doubled within the last six to nine months. Where we were running three to five calls, we're now running nine to eleven calls a day. I would also like to draw your attention to the proposed outlook. While it is difficult to predict, and I agree with Debbie, numbers are the numbers, and I'll go with the numbers. But if you look at my actual, actual year-to-date, I was in the black last year. Whether I can absorb the first hit and the personal cost hits for eighty-four thousand this year, I don't know. I'm on track to make my revenues. That doesn't include out-of-area fires, but I'm on track with my projected revenues. So how that looks, I really can't project. But I can tell you, I have a history of carryover in my budget. But it is diminishing, and it is running away from me. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, come here to the council real quick. I wanted to just give a little background and what was asked was. So when the administrative budget, we reduced by NFDB and did not factor in funding a project administrator. I asked Captain Cochran and Chief Moore to bring a 10% reduction to the council as part of this budget workshop and talk about what services we believe we would have to eliminate and what services would suffer, specifically services to the community. So that was the purpose of that, and from there, I'll turn it back over to Savage.
COVID-19, we don't know what the true impact is going to be to our small community with revenues. We've heard the straight state projections. With our local community, it's going to be difficult. But we know our sales tax is going to be down because we had stores that were shuttered. You had three months where, two months, where the high school wasn't in session. You did not have that gaggle of kids going up and down, spending their money at Birkin and IGA. We are going to see our business license go down, the gross retail sales part of it, and we are going to see our sales tax go down. So far, our property taxes have increased, so that's actually helping us out a little bit. We reduced our transient occupancy tax down to $308,000 from the $507. I looked back at when the economy in 2008 tanked. We got down to $365,000 in TOT. Since there's been a travel ban, we've been on lockdown. Our biggest quarter that we see that revenue come in is July through September. Now that we have positive cases here, we don't know if our fair is going to happen, which brings travelers in. We don't know if we're going to have the Bluegrass Festival, anything like we've had in the past. Unfortunately, I think our TOT is going to be quite a ways down. We had Buxton give us a seventy-two-hour snapshot, and TOT, there's nothing, it's down bad. I don't see it coming up in time for us to save some of those revenues. So we're projecting that we're gonna lose a little bit next year. So when we adjusted our
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So the TOT tax, when is the next paying quarter for the TOT?
Bills will go out July 1 for the quarter of April through June.
Those go out, so April through June, so what if down end of March, what do we look like?
Sixteen percent down.
Got it, thank you.
So with the adjusted revenue budget off to the right, this is how we split this portion. This is our taxes, this is what goes to fire, this is what goes to police, and what stays to help fund administrative services. Those percentages, we split the revenues that are not associated with a complete department. Like in finance, we have last county or pollution control district because we provide those services. So that revenue is directed right at finance. This revenue is our general revenue that is split between the three, and it's split by the percentages on the right. Do we have any questions about revenue projections? The business license side of it, there's two, there's two portions to it. There's a flat rate and what we call a gross sales. The flat rate we didn't adjust, it's the gross rate we adjusted because we know the Birkin is gonna be down. Walmart, they had a lot of sales. Ross was closed, Marshall's was closed. It's going to affect us.
I have a question. So, so did you receive a payment from the auditor's office or when was the last payment you received from the auditor? Oh, the self-tax.
Oh, sales tax. We have a sales tax through the auditor's office. It comes direct, it comes directly from the board of legalization. What we get from the auditor's office is our property taxes and our property tax in lieu of vehicle.
In lieu of what?
Vehicle license fees.
Okay, got it. And you received that from there?
This month.
Okay.
And
How was that? We broke that?
We were okay. If you look at the property tax in lieu of vehicle, that's the dollar amount we received for the year, 1.5 million.
Thank you. And that was, did you receive that this month?
We did.
Thank you.
Okay, to give a quick snapshot of the three budgets. The 1920 budget for admin services, we had a projected $182,000 shortfall. The year-to-date actual as of yesterday, we have a $708,000 deficit. And that's because there's a timing delay with revenues that come in. Sales tax, we're always four quarters behind. So we will not see that number change until in June, we're getting sales tax for April. In July, we're getting sales tax for May. We have to accrue those revenues back, but that cash comes in next year, not this year. Of course, with our proposed budget, $23,000 shortfall with the changes that Chief Jones spoke about. Public safety police, the 1920 adopted budget, when we split off, they started with a $429,000 deficit. The year-to-date actual as of right now is 70,000, which the chief alluded to. He's, he's collecting more of his revenues and some of his expenses are down. His proposed budget is 517,000 in the hole for next year. Public safety fire, they started with in 1920, a $123,811 deficit. Their year-to-date actual, they're in the positive by $7,127. Their proposed budget for next year is 295,000 in the hole. When you look at these budgets, we have to remember this is May, we still have three payrolls to go. And that's our biggest expenses. So we are going to see some of those deficits grow a little bit. And kind of the most important thing I want to show you is our cash flow history for the general fund. Because we have been spending a little bit more than we've been bringing in, our cash flow has been decreasing as we keep going because those purse payments keep going up. Each July, you see the amount go down drastically because that is a large lump sum payment we make to CalPERS in July of every year. The biggest thing I cannot stress enough, I need you to look at November and December of 2019. General fund with negative cash and the first time I've been here in eighteen years. You guys were spending into your reserve, that's what was carrying you. That's troublesome. In the past, if you look in December and January, we got down to 91,000 in cash before the big check came in from what the county voted for property taxes. We've never gone negative before. All I can do is stress to you, we need to slow the roll. It's really important. Any questions?
Are you done with your presentation?
Absolutely.
There may be some questions. I certainly do, I might have another thing. On one hand, it's simple, but I guess my main question is, are there any suggested solutions? Has anybody worked on problem solving or are we just pointing out that something sucks one way and sucks the second way? Has any, has anybody worked on options?
I think
I'm fine with anybody answering that. Options, cutting staff is
So it's obviously measure N was the first, first option which failed. I do think that, as we all pointed out, that, you know, I think we'll have a better snapshot of it probably in September. So not to say that we will, it will not be, that's what we very well might be. But I think that when we look forward at some of these, and I'll speak, you know, specifically to the police department, is when we, and of course, those, those numbers that Savage pointed out are based on the council approving, removing the four percent vacancy rate, approving the side fund loan. And so coming into this year with a 270-something thousand dollar deficit, is that correct, Dave? For the police department, for example, is it attainable to try and get down to in the black? I think it is attainable, and I think it's, you know, again, a hundred thousand dollars. I'm not gonna say that's all gone, but there can be small things done, hopefully pick up something here and there. So to answer your question on behalf of the police department, are there things? Absolutely.
So that, so that's great news. Because we don't wanna just look at numbers and say it's gonna be bad one way or the other. Would you recommend the three cuts that Captain Cochran presented?
No.
And Captain Cochran, would you recommend those?
No.
And Debbie Savage, would you recommend those?
Cutting lab bodies, no. Making positions, yes.
Can you clarify?
Clarifying means they have a vacant sergeant's position that should be shelved until a future, a future time when we have a sustainable revenue source beyond what we have.
So basically freezing positions in a sense?
Yes.
Do the two of you agree with that? The freezing position portion?
No, but I think when, you know, when that's hard to roll, that's, that's kind of an outlier by itself.
Why, why is that?
Based on other things, I don't know, what's the best way to answer that? So I, it's something that we wouldn't discuss in the position.
Okay. So one sense, if we, if we say, okay, we need to save money, let's, let's cut staff. And the staff are looking at cutting based on the presentations from the fire department and the police department. And so if we do that, we're looking at less services now. And they will request to present the downfalls, the negative impacts to the community. They don't sound really great. And if we wait two to four years without taking any actions, whether bringing in income or whether cutting, we may have, we may be forced to make those cuts. And so one question is, do we want to feel the pain now or later? And another question would be, if we choose later, can we use that time between now and then to figure out how to earn money or bring more revenue? And also, it sounds like, if it sounds like there's, there's potential opportunities that we're not counting on. It looks like there may be some out-of-area fires, and it looks like there may be some more, some more revenue that we want to bring in.
The out-of, this report, the out-of-area fires, the back grind, those are what we call soft money. You should not debalance your operations budget with one-time revenues. Even if that grind is three years long, you should be going in with a balanced budget.
So just considering all this, I'm thinking if some of our options are our only, I don't think it's our only option to cut staff. I definitely don't think that's our only option. In fact, it would make sense to have staff remain so that we can figure out how to make money within the time. Do whatever we can until we're forced to right now, rather than, rather than deplete our resources and our services right now. So you were also, though you mentioned there was one thing you couldn't do, is that, the loan.
Yes.
So that's, that's a, we can't do that.
Oh, no. The loan from natural gas, that's how it works. We've got our city attorney helping me draft the resolution. It's going to be a very, very precise resolution, has to take a forefit vote passed by the council. There is going to be specific language in there that you cannot borrow from the natural gas again until this one is paid off. You have to, you have to pledge your revenues to pay it first. So you're looking at, now you have CalPERS, you have to pay through payroll, and now you're gonna have to pay this. You're gonna have to have a revenue pledge with it.
So that'll be additional information that will potentially affect. So I guess I would, I would want to offer two directions to staff especially. One, up our communication with the community way more than we've ever done in the past, so that everybody understands this. We made an attempt with the measure, and people voted, well, it didn't mean two-thirds, though. Half the people voted yes, half the people didn't, but I'm not convinced that everybody fully understood what was at, what was at risk. So I think that's up to staff to communicate that. And I think we really need to communicate this better. And secondly, the other direction I think we should have, somebody focus constantly, either in every department, on bringing in income. And I don't know that this budget is actually, I mean, it's one of those things, it is what it is. And if we take action where we're gonna bring the community in, we're going to inform them so that they actually understand what they have to gain or lose. Bottom line, you get what you pay for. If I can't afford firefighters to cops, I'm not gonna get them. And if I can't afford them, I am. But if we don't collectively understand that we can't afford them, we may think that the city's just not being responsible. And I think we can avoid that, prevent that with communication, bring everybody in. There are multiple, multiple is, you know, bringing income. That comes with creativity, but I think we should move forward as long as there is specific focus on bringing in revenue and way more additional communication with the community, two-way communication so that we actually know that they've understood us, not just mad or opposed here and there, some way of reaching out and understanding that everybody knows what we're doing.
May I?
Yes.
May I reply also to Mr. McCourt on behalf of the fire? Because thank you for asking if I have solutions. I'll draw your attention to this talking here, I think it was in the last budget here. Miss Savage presented solutions for employees to help pay their insurance and their purse costs. Three different levels, there's dollar amounts attached to all that, how the employees can help themselves. So that was a solution that we came up with collectively that was presented. We put Measure N out there. I don't want to talk too much about Measure N, but I guarantee that the public did not know the ramifications. And yes, it was a 5149. So I think we have room to go back after attacks with more education. The side fund loan is brilliant, we've been working on that, trying to get that for a few years, mentioning that. That is going to give us wiggle room, that gives us room. The revenue from other areas, I will not budget, but I'm confident fires will burn and we will bring revenue in. And fees and charges, I fully intend to charge for every service I provide now that's in the fee schedule. Which there were fees at times we just weren't charging for, we were being that friendly department, that friendly neighbor. Now, as we heard from Measure N, the public spoke to me, pay to play, okay. So we play and you pay. And so that's where I'm going, the fees and charges will replace everything we do. And once again, I would say, when you said can or can't afford fire and police, I would like, I would say want to. Do you want to afford fire and police? Do you want parks? Do you want, because it really is what they want and what level of service that they want. But I couldn't agree more, but I know in my department, I am working on solutions. I am a problem and solution man. I don't like problems brought and dropped on my desk, how can we fix it? The trouble I have now is, we have been working on solutions already. I mean, when I talk to you, I do in-house maintenance, that saves 120 dollars an hour on taking, because I have a gentleman with the ability. We try every angle to save money in our angles. That's why we're having this discussion, frankly. We get creative, get wild, but we're there, but we're not backing off. I would not recommend these cuts in my department. I know you didn't ask me, but I'll tell you, I would not recommend humans.
Well, you read my mind, I was going to ask you.
I would not recommend this, sir.
So, thank you, it sounds like we're not recommending these cuts. They wouldn't provide any benefit to the city and the community.
They're not recommendations, they're a snapshot of what services and suffering.
Yeah, I do need to remind the council that, yes, we have an amazing group of employees that work for the city. Such dedicated, awesome individuals that have given years because we love the city. I'm one of those employees. And I'm here to tell you, sometimes, as an employee, we have to give up a little bit to help our city. What we proposed with the cuts, it's not much out of an employee's pocket. I could go from... Can I see that, James?
With the caveat that obviously those cuts are bargaining and they'll have to be agreed on.
My employee's share per month of health insurance is, right now, is 46 dollars. That is incredible. Even if I quadrupled it out of my salary, that would put me at 184 dollars a month. Please tell me where you can find incredible health insurance for 184 dollars a month.
So would you give this to staff as an option for...
You would have to take it to bargaining units, you have...
And is there an order of things sort of thing, do they negotiate?
That's, negotiation, that's up to, that's up to...
I mean, at the June 3 meeting, you'll be met with some proposals and some of the options on things like that if the city wants to handle that, that will be in a closed session.
All right, well, it sounds then like staff is actually looking for ways to increase the revenues. It doesn't sound like they're actually recommending cuts, but it does sound like, you know, we don't need to talk about Measure N, but in the past, and I think that's back down to communication with respect to everybody who's here and whatnot. And I would be interested to know what the rest of the community wants to get rid of firefighters or police officers.
And I will remind the council also that this budget that you were looking at in the general fund does not include any increases to employees for salaries or benefits during bargaining. If you do that, that will increase your bottom line. The only ones who got the increase were public works, they were on their third year of their contract. And again, I will please ask you to think about this. When you continue to give and you do not have a sustainable revenue source to support that, you are digging yourself in a deeper hole and carrying that through to the future.
An example of giving is having officers on the street without a balance budget.
An example of that would be getting raises?
Well, there's a couple ways to get them. We're going to pick on some, but I can't define what exactly is being recommended. And I know this is a poor information and we get to actually have a budget meeting where we determine if we approve it or not. Is everybody on staff optimistic that we can bring in revenue and actually enhance the quality of our city? Or do we think we should just go into town, get rid of a couple people and maintain basic services? And do we even know what the community wants out of it?
That's the decision for you five. We present the numbers, we show you what we have to work with, it is your decision.
Yeah, I'm happy making decisions, that's not a tough thing. I want to know what the people want. I want to know that actually, there's 8,900 people, I want to know that 8,900 people recognize that the city could potentially lose different services and are they okay with that? And do they want to weigh in with services? Do they want to have a say? I want to be able to represent that and I'd like staff to be able to funnel that.
Mr. McCourt, I think, sitting here, I have a feeling for what my constituents would want. Do you have a feeling at all for what they might want, yours?
Sure.
I don't just got past the long meeting, Mr. Jones, but several times I've brought up to different administrators that have come through with our TOT tax, since it is a lot of outside revenue coming in, as people travel through our community, increasing that. And it seems like every time we get to it, then somebody's moving along. So I think that's, if we went from 10 dollars to 15 dollars, that number's gone huge with the numbers on that TOT tax as a source of revenue for the city. It seems like I'm mistaken, right, as an administrator leading, so?
And if that's what, you know, if that's what the council, the direction we need to do, I would bring that back. I would agree with Chief Moore that, you know, the police department's saying we've never built out for DUI crashes and we are doing that now. So there's other things we're discovering that are legal and that we can build out for. And of course, our services, we have a pretty good fee schedule. But if that's what you want brought back, I can bring it back for discussion or actions up to the council.
You're asking for additional revenue opportunities, right, with TOT?
TOT, yeah.
That's a great suggestion, one that may, I think, should be probably implemented.
Areas close to us, I mean, they're, you know, they say, okay, 30 dollars in resort fee, we're charging 30.
20 dollars each percent?
I have another question. Ferrer, do you recommend that we make staff pay for their hardships? Is that a recommendation?
You know what, Mr. Ferrer, that's going to be a bargaining item, so, I'm sorry that...
No, that's okay.
...it's going to be a bargaining item, so I apologize for that.
No, that's okay, thank you.
So do you recommend that we bring it to the table so they have the option? Or do they bring that to the table?
So, so, so that's a bargaining topic that we have to discuss in closed session. All MOUs that will be ratified in public session, the discussion regarding that has to be in closed session. Hold on.
That was correct. Council, any other questions?
I have one. Is it possible for us to adjust some of the pricing for the golf course and make it a little bit more profitable? Or it's a pretty substantial loss on the golf course? Is that total, going to be like the whole year?
So obviously, that is item B on our agenda, so I think that if we wait, we'll probably be able to discuss that over tomorrow.
And the information that made that slide comes to you guys every quarter.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to do a little bit.
Okay.
Hey, thank you for bringing that. The only thing you really brought was cuts. I don't see any out of the box creative ideas how you can save other money. I mean, like Captain talked before, get rid of the cameras, or, I mean, there's other ways to save money. And I didn't see that in this presentation, all I saw was trying to throw it out to the public, the shock value on, we're going to cut staff, and that's not the case. The case is, bring us out ideas how you can get your budget down, that's what I want to see. I don't want to see staff cut, I mean, unless it's a last resort, but we've got a lot of money to make up here and at least some really good ideas. And I think just your power bill is either on the way to save money or whatever. You know, and I know you're going to say all and stuff and those ideas, but there's got to be better ideas than staff and, you know. I know it's ideas I want to see, Kevin.
I understand, Councilman Stafford, and I think that one of the things was that we focused on was that, that 17%, and that's why, and I get it, and I don't disagree with you, and yes, I mean, that was, unfortunately, that was for shock value and I can't hide that. But we can do some more, you know, scraping and scraping. You know, but when we're talking about significant, when we're talking about significant dollars, we have to go after personnel, I mean, again, I don't, it doesn't matter, because I don't want it and I know you don't want it. But there are ways, and we have saved a good portion of money this year. And I think it will be interesting when the year's over, when we reconcile and see what we actually are at. So, you know, example, with the police department, we know we're going to have significant savings of some sort with the dispatch contract and things like that. So I agree with you, and we can do that.
Yeah, I agree. Something on Stafford?
Okay, so I feel like the city of Susanville is a skeleton crew. I am, I will not agree to cut one more, one more physician, or any more at all, actually. So we do need to think of other ways, and if, we need to take time to do that, whatever needs to be done. Are there any other questions, council, before we move on to item 3B?
Maybe not a question, but I kind of hear a consensus in that there's no way to speak for the rest of the council. But it sounds like we want to enhance the quality of life of the community in Susanville, and we don't want to go broke doing that. And we're looking to our expert staff for recommendations and solutions to bring home the money, bring the money, whatever. We're all saying that differently. We're not happy with just, these are some cuts, this is our budget, we've made bad decisions in the past, let's pull those out of it, it's not just stated, let's bring some solutions. But I'm confident you guys can do it, every single one of you, I'm excited to see what you do. I just want to empower you to be as, as whatever you need to be to make it happen.
Thank you, and we do have a little bit of timeline, so if the council's done, if we can move on.
Moving on to item 3B. Item 3B is consideration for resolution number 20-971, and that's presented by Kevin Wood.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is something that I'm bringing to you through multiple requests from local golfers and the request from a council member. This is the consideration of authorizing a temporary reduction in golf use at Diamond Lake Golf Course. Golf course opens on May 15. The golf course typically opens April 1, depending on the weather, it could be earlier, it could be later. However, it's fluctuated in the past. It's been requested that the city prorate the current rate for people who wish to purchase an annual membership, and that's the one thing we're talking about here, is an annual membership. Additionally, people who have paid memberships prior to May 15 are reimbursed if the council chooses to do so. We currently have 14 people, correct me, Staff? 14 people, well, I take that right, 14 memberships, that could be one, that could be a pair, I didn't get into specifically. Obviously, since the golf course sets the fees, I'm sorry, the council sets the fees for the golf course, any amendments, reimbursements must be approved by the council. So based on the guidance I received, it's a, you know, kind of dummy math, and basically what I did is I took two months. So I averaged it out, I took two months, and then I added 15%. So what you see there is, and I believe attached to it is... If you look at the regular rates there, about three pages back, again, it's basically two months prorated and I added 15%. So it's not a true two-month prorate dollar amount. On, you know, in regards to this, obviously, we don't know how many memberships. I did not bring that in, that's my fault, I should have brought in how many memberships, annual memberships we give out of here. I don't know if you know off the top of your head.
Live service, 41.
41, so we're 14, we do 41, and of course, that's a combination. And you can see the variety of the fees, coupled with the card versus an individual. So will we get all those folks back, I don't know. So this is presented to you, I did not come to you with multiple options, I just thought it'd be easier to pose one, so you, if you like it, great, if you want to do it different, great, then we can bring it back June 3. I would ask that we try and get some momentum tonight, because, you know, what we would do is, probably give a two-week raise period if the council agrees to do it, say, okay, for this two-week period, they can raise, and then they'll just go back to the regular rates.
What do you recommend?
I recommend, recommend this to the council.
So you don't think it's a good choice one way or the other?
Well, you have to put two hats on, the council member report with your financial app. I would say no, but, you know, and that's even, that's even a toss-up. You know, at least two people who are annual membership told me if it's not reduced, they will not sign up. Is that true? I don't know. So I don't, I don't know, I'm, I would come in with a recommendation, but this is the recommendation that I was asking for. So it's a toss-up, I don't know, but we have a massive exodus if we don't reduce rates, I don't know that.
Thank you. One more question?
All right, it's a good idea, but since, you know, it was a month and a half that we weren't open. It's a really good idea to offer to people, because a lot of them may have moved from 41 to 14. Obviously, people aren't doing it because of that, that time period not being open, in my mind.
I think they paced, they bought their annual membership and thought they were going to get something out of it. They did not get a month and a half or whatever, two months out of it. We need to, we need to get back that vibe, so. You guys ready to make a motion?
I would disagree with all of that. I think the golf course is open, they need to get to use their carts, so they're having a hissy about not using their carts. So what I would recommend is give them 15% back on their cart rental fee. And you can't tell me they weren't out there playing, because I saw them out there playing, they take their private carts and they play. They just didn't get the storm out there, and that's the bottom line. No matter what they seem to think. They just didn't get the storm out there, and that's the bottom line, no matter what they seem to think. And I would like to see this on the next agenda, Kevin, to maybe reduce it down a notch in the holes for the remainder of the year.
Yes, sir.
I think it's just that.
So I have to ask some questions. I think some of the reasons, I know that this is on the agenda, but I was wondering, my original question to Kevin Jones is, we're $82,000 in the hole, right, Debbie, from the Golf Course this year? And in my personal, we just discussed, you know, making staff pay for their own insurance. We just, we're set for some pretty hard decisions here. And Debbie is saying, you know, we're gonna be in the hole no matter what. The fire and the police department might be positive, that's great. However, down the line, when the CalPERS goes up another $500,000 in four years, how are we gonna prepare for that if we don't make cuts now? So my, so my concern is, yes, you're right, you're absolutely right, Debbie, that they gave their money, and they did. We are required to give them that service and we do not give them that service, I agree. But to touch on what Kevin is saying, is I think that what he is saying is that we are spending money for something that is very nice to have, but I would much rather have police officers and firefighters down the line as opposed to being able to go golf. And so that is, I suppose, a question that I would ask the public. And further, I would say, this is something that we have to talk about, is, we're $82,000 in the hole in the Golf Course and we're talking about making some further cuts.
May I add to that?
Yeah, of course.
During that month and a half, April through part of May, the Golf Course was open. The pro shop may not have been open, the carts weren't available, but staff was still there, maintaining the course, watering, mowing. There were playing going on. In those annual memberships that are paid, $300 of that annual membership is towards a cart. If you divide that by seven months, that's $42 a month. If you wanna give them a break, give them $42 back.
The other thing I can add is that, you know, we, Ms. Savage, right, the pro shop with staff, we can hold, we can talk to our folks who are working and find out who those 14 people who were, who were golfing. And they're gonna have, they're gonna know. I mean, the people who are out there, they're golfing, you know, they're golfing every day, so. And I could do that if the council so requests.
Well, as Debbie just pointed out, it's $42 for two months, I mean, that's not the most money. What I am saying, what I meant originally, and my original comment was, is there a way that we could make the Golf Course more profitable to not be losing $82,000 a year? Because in my mind, you know, count five years down the line, we haven't paid that 400, 500,000 CalPERS. That's one year that we could pay CalPERS almost, of money that we would have by then, as opposed to golfing for five years. That's just a question that I would like to, you know, everyone in this room to keep in mind. And when, as Kevin said, it would be brought back on the agenda, and then I suppose we can discuss it further.
Yeah.
I would like to see an action plan to make it more profitable. And I'm, not that I want to, you know, people to have to pay more to golf, but it does come down to, I would much rather have police and fire and have that safety and security in our city than to, you know, I could drive to Elmwood to go play golf. Not that I would want to, but I'm saying I would like to see a possible action plan.
We can do that, we can, we can bring that to the council, you know, in the next meetings. So this, this specifically addresses, dues right now.
Yeah, thank you.
But absolutely, we will bring that.
Sorry, I just wanted to clear something, and I, thank you, everyone with this issue.
Okay, so are we ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, resolution 20-571. I have a second.
One favor.
If I don't get what 42 or half of the time, you just roll your hand. I just, I wish this, I don't like this, again, I.
You have to give a yes or no.
I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, I want more specific.
So I have to give a yes or no.
Well.
You can't talk until you give a yes or no.
Okay, thank you.
Or you can abstain.
Yeah, you don't need my vote, right? Yeah, so I'll just abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries. Let's move on to item three C, which is our pre-position list, and that's presented by Kevin Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this was brought back, we had a discussion last week in regards to whether we will freeze positions or we want to have different language. So these are currently all of the positions in the city that are vacant, well, I'm sorry, not all. They're the ones I'm bringing to you to have authority to go ahead and pursue, meaning, apply the job, go through the selection procedure, and hire. These are, and I'll invite Ms. Savage to come in here if she chooses to. These are all non, I'm gonna say non-increase impact to the budget. These are all factored into our 1920 and 2021, by the way, that's correct, Ms. Savage. And we obviously have, you know, some, some things that are time-sensitive.
Council questions?
Yeah, we've talked numerous times about reclassifying some of the pay grades on these, and we need to do that before we fly them. So I would hope they'll be brought to us before you apply some of these.
Uh, Councilmember Stafford, so thank you for asking, I was gonna address that, but yes, there are, there's at least one that is going to be a closed session item for June 3. That will be the assistant to the city manager. You know, if there's any others you want to be, you want brought back to discuss realignment, you can tell me and I will add that for next week.
I think that's all I can see.
Okay, that's all.
You're not? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to authorize. I can't get much.
I'll be very much.
Thank you, second.
Sorry to read you.
Did you get that one? Right here. All favor?
I, I.
Post, post your cares. Thanks, we're going to move into our item three B, our governance.
Uh, Madam Mayor, can we please make a ten minute break? All the members of the present.